I will take this opportunity to first of all, thank you for having me come in and speak to you today. And give you some information as it relates to my position on issues if that's of concern. And my desire as it relates to being a city commissioner. I thank the residents of the city for allowing me to have served in the past 10 years. I'm in my 10th year now. And I look forward to another four years of service to the community. I'm a native of St. Augustine, which is one certain it could be, from '43. And left in '65 to go away, uh, left in '66 to go away to college actually. And returned in '83, '84. And have been here since that time. I feel very committed to this city. I think I have a tremendous understanding of St. Augustine and what it's all about. I discovered as if I didn't know all the time that it's one of the most beautiful cities in America. And I'm proud to be a citizen here. I didn't think I'd ever return when I left, but having returned, I'm really glad that this, that this is my home. And I'm very proud of that, so obviously I'm proud of being a commissioner of the city. We're very unique. We're not the typical city of certainly our size. And of course, we are the nation's oldest city, so that does give us a special place. And I think that's recognized by everyone, and I appreciate that as much if not more than everyone else.
Okay, want to start, Peter?
I'd like to. The West Augustine Pipeline has been one of your main issues for a long time. Are you taking, uh, is there anything happening on it? There seems to be stalled somewhere.
There is something happening, and that's an interesting question that you would lead off with. I think though, we have to understand the history. We have to understand how we adapt to where we are. And acknowledging that, try to begin to resolve as to how we, how we solve the problems. Those of you who have lived here in and at the time, understand West Augustine. West Augustine was a community that was greatly denied for many years. And that's just a fact. Services, particularly as it relates to utilities. And if you look at St. Augustine, when, when we were the, the main focus of St. John's County, when we had all of the services and the county had very little, we probably had an opportunity then to, to bring West Augustine within the city limits. But the city fathers saw not to do so. However, in the services that they really needed, they turned to the city. Water, sewer, or other services. They live on, uh, most of them out there on wells and septic tanks. And wells and septic tanks that do not meet current standards. Those who've been fortunate enough to place new septic tanks can always replace their wells. So that has proven to be a problem over time. Now, as I say, West Augustine was neglected partially because the county had few services. And they just went on their list of priorities. As the county grew, uh, they still did not give the kind of attention to West Augustine that it probably deserved to sort of do a catch-all. If you remember, it wasn't until Corinne Brown came here and toured West Augustine and said it looked like a third world country, that people got upset. Matter of fact, they really got more upset with Corinne than they got upset with what she saw and what she said. However, when Michael came in and said the very same thing, they again responded, but they responded in a totally different manner. They responded by rushing to try to provide services. And he assured them that he would do everything he could to provide funding for various services in the West Augustine area. The difference, I'll let you make your call on that. So they began to provide services, and that includes paving, streets, and other services. They still don't have the kind of drainage system, et cetera, in general utilities. They still have ditches, ditches where there's standing water. Ditches where you can see, you know, the, the impurities of the water. And yet you see a tricycle in the water, which tells you children have been playing around that ditch. And you, you dig into the soil in West Augustine, flip it a couple of times, and you can smell where the septic tanks are leaking. I mean, it, it's, so there's certainly problems in that area. But to fast forward, so we come up to, close to the date, uh, they need a lot in terms of catch-all. The county has begun to respond due to pressure. That CRA they've got in West Augustine area has placed pressure on them. And they began to respond to their needs, not at the level that they should. Uh, you know, that thing of catch-all, and you know, you say restoration, you owe, you, they owe something. But they're not getting, they're getting it on an equal level with any other community today. They're not getting it in the sense of saying, "We need to subsidize you in addition too, because there were so many years that you didn't receive assistance." That's our service district as it relates to water, as it relates to, that's our service district. Uh, we acquired it when West, uh, the county had nothing. But it costs money to, to provide services to the area. The county has yet, and, and I don't want to, you know, I've gotten into disputes with the county before. And, and it's not an attempt to anger them, it's just an attempt to face the facts. But if you provide, you can get funding to run line. You can get funding to provide the pipeline for drainage, et cetera, for sewer, et cetera. But it's the upkeep, it's the maintenance that's really cost you. So if you run the line, but if nobody ties in, you're losing money. It's like you can set up a bus service to run from here to there, but if nobody gets on the bus, you're going in a hole. Where the county is not in the, uh, not prepared to mandate that if sewer is available, you must tie in. They're not, they've not mandated sewer, they've not mandated water. Now, there's a flip side to that. You've got an elderly woman that lives in West Augustine and maybe receive only $400 to $500 in my social security. He or she has never paid a water or sewer bill. All of a sudden, here's a $50, $70 a month water or sewer bill they gotta pay. You can't get a grant for that. So how do they make that payment? So some of them, it's, it's suddenly putting them in a position now where they've gotta put out money. So naturally, they don't, they're not gung ho about it. You've got someone else who just put in a new septic tank last year, two years ago. And now you're saying, "You've gotta crush that septic tank, because you've gotta tie into our sewer lines." The guy said, "What do you mean? I've gotta tie in, I've got a septic." So you say, "Okay, if that septic ever breaks down, if it needs repair, if it needs anything, at that point, you'll have to tie in." Again, the county, uh, Health Department, which is part of the state. In order for that to happen, when they pull permits, the state's not prepared at one point to say, "We'll let you know when that happens," so that they will have to tie in. So there are people who are kind of, are not willing, because of the, the public pressure, to, to step up to the plate and enforce these kind of rules. If we run the line, which we're prepared to do, but nobody ties in, we can't, I mean, we're losing money. So we've been in that position back, and the county said to us, "You enforce it." Well, how do I enforce that for, I can't send my police department. I can't, I'm gonna put a lien on that house? I'm gonna tell the little, I'm gonna tell, so we become the bad guys. "You've gotta tie in, or we're gonna slap a lien," because that's what we do in the city. If it was that, we'd say, "You either tie in or, you know, you pay." But we can do that in the city, we can't do that in the county. And so we've gone back and forth with this for the last year. They, they pulled a company in from Tallahassee, they made able to get some funding, or the monies look like it's all lined up in terms of running lines. But we still have not crossed that point of saying mandate that you must tie in. And without that mandate, the reality of it is, it becomes a sudden burden on us to say, "Oops, we caught an eye, and how do we pay for it?"
Do you think the county shouldn't mandate that?
Absolutely. I think they have to. It's a bit of pill. Don't get me wrong, I understand, and it's the public pressure. Now, particularly this year, being a, a election year, they don't want the runoff that they're subject to, to receive. But, so they're kind of, they're, they're just not gonna hope. And again, I'm not saying this to put any additional pressure on them. But I sit here in a position saying, "I know what's happening here, and I understand, and you know, you're making me look like the bad guy. But I'm just trying to work with you, because I agree, they need the service."
The county's saying that it's your utility.
That's true.
And you should enforce it, just like you have a water line out there, but you have nobody paying.
How do you enforce? They're not my constituents, they're not my, they're not within the city limits. And we have no power, or, that's like me going to Georgia and telling somebody, "Well, state of Georgia, excuse me, you're out of your territory." We are an incorporated, we can only enforce rules within our, the corporate sector.
Yes, but you have water lines out there, and you, if somebody doesn't pay, you shut the water off.
That's it, but that, we're not talking about shutting it off. We're saying, you know, mandate, and, because if they shut off, and that's it, they're, they're too much to enforce. But we run these lines, and you don't hook up, we're losing money by you not hooking up. And the only charge to, how do I force you? I put a lien on your house? I can, and the city, shut off, but we don't have that problem in the city, because they have, in order to pull a permit to build a house in the city, you have to have the water sewer. So it's, it's difficult. I, I, get me, don't get me wrong, it's just, it's difficult. We're walking, it's a slow process, we are still working with the county. The CRA has been reasonably cooperative, we're educating them. They began to educate their residents, because they recognize too, that it's something that has to happen. If we talk about jobs, we talk about industry. That, that news is talking about a general store. And they're saying, "But they've gotta have sewer, they can't do it on a septic tank." So now they're saying, "We've gotta have services out there." So we recognize that, and we're trying to work with that, along with working with the county. But it's, it's different with a general store than it is with the little old lady. And so it, it's tricky. We're pushing it, but it's slow.
So, so you say you're working with the CRA, but can they really do anything to?
Well, they'll educate their neighbor, because they're their neighbors.
So it's education, but they can't?
Yeah, the educational process, and they, they now recognize, so they're trying to educate their neighbors. But that's again, it's a volunteer effort. Because the county again is still not saying, "We're gonna mandate it." Now, maybe after the election, they'll say, "We're gonna mandate it." But they're not saying that right.
Well, they've had a while, I mean, we were not in an election period when that happened, right?
And they did not, oh, they had, they told us to mandate. And again, they, uh, I'm saying to you, I got in hot water with the Gallimere Center. And I said, "I got in hot water," because I spoke my mind, and the first thing the newspaper read the next day was two commissioners, you know, confrontation. They had these two black commissioners, looked like they were at each other's throat. I mean, I, he, I was accused of grandstanding. Because I simply said, "If you're not gonna provide services, give me my tax dollars back."
I don't remember that, I didn't cover that.
We won't get, we won't discuss that.
Okay. Another subject, the, do you really, would you solidly behind the vote to spend 1.4 million on the VIC for Picasso?
Originally, no.
We're hearing a lot of people saying.
Well, let's, let's just back up, there, because there's two separations here. One has to do with Picasso exhibit. The other has to do with the, the expansion of, the upgrading of the VIC. That will make it a facility that can handle a vision of, a legitimate exhibit of, you know what you're dealt with. I can talk about both of them, because I've got an understanding of where we are, where we work. I mean, one had to simply do with the fire. I mean, you can't put in an expense, and if it's, if it's fire, you drop water. Because you ruin everything. So you had to, we had to change the system around. So it basically suck all the air, I mean, it handled it differently. And so there were things that we had to do in terms of that, as well as some renovations, some other changes at the facility. As it relates to the Picasso exhibit, and, and I got in on this on the ground floor. You remember three years ago, maybe, two, three years ago, when there was this uproar about commissioners going to Spain? And while there was initially four commissioners going, three of them bailed out. I was the only commissioner who said, "It's a worthy trip, it's something we've done." And, and I was the only commissioner that stayed on the boat when they thought they were, everybody jumped ship. I went to Spain, I had an opportunity coincidentally in part, but then meeting with the mayor of Malaga, and the, uh, mayor, and, uh, some other folks, they said, "We're gonna help you, and how if we, we're gonna send the Picasso exhibit to you?" And he got on the phone at that meeting and made a call over to the foundation and said, "We're sitting here with representatives from the city of St. Augustine, the vice mayor, and so on and so." "And we think it'd be a great idea for Picasso to go to St. Augustine during your next tour of the American, coincide." "And we wanna do this at no cost other than expenses." Now, with that net, well, they'd send exhibit if it was in Montana or if it was in Georgia. We'd have to pay to send it down, the cost of bringing it here, the packing, unpacking, and doing that. But it was not gonna be a profit cost. They weren't gonna add their charges for rental of the exhibit. And at that point in time, it was less money, well, less money. Since that time, um, our people have made contact with a collector who has a traveling exhibit. Not the foundation originally, but a collector. So we now are being faced with not only the cost of expenses of shipping and bringing, taking it down to four, but the profit side of it in terms of rental. We would be renting the exhibit for that two week, or that three period. And there within, the costing went up. So, as I said, initially, it was not that cost, not a piece of preparing the VIC, was it still been in place? We looked around, and initially, we, we looked at using, um, the art gallery, uh, associations. We looked at Flagler Colleges, you know, they've got a, an exhibit, a hall there. We looked at that, we looked at some alternatives as to that. Now, that didn't come through our staff, I don't know what's happened with that, but we ended up not doing that, and so we're now looking back into the VIC. Going around, did it to part of that answer.
How did we not get the foundation? The people you met with initially said the foundation was on board to bring an exhibit. And what you're telling me now is, we're getting a privately owned, which?
It's a privately owned exhibit, yeah.
And the other exhibit goes away?
Well, yeah, but.
I know you can't have both here, but it would seem to me.
Again, this is, this is a very touchy situation.
Oh, okay.
And, and I'm saying touchy, and then I've got my colleagues, and we worked well on many things, but we don't always agree. And, uh, there have been times when they, a couple of them have been upset because I was outspoken in my disagreement of my satisfaction with some of what they were doing. But I think this, I felt that one of them stepped in and got involved at another level, so now somebody else is doing this.
And now we're paying 300 plus thousand for that exhibit?
I asked the question, I said, "Wait a minute, what happened to the first people we were talking to?" Because almost like we ignored the foundation, and we're gonna go talk to these guys. And after talking to them, now we go back and talk to the foundation again. Well, I don't know what happened with that, but I'm not out, I was out of the picture. So I was not engaged in any of the further negotiations, but I do know that we didn't go back to the first person who said, "I'll help you with this."
And they won't explain to you what happened there?
Well, I think what happened there was somebody got in it when they should have left it alone.
And said, "Hey, I've got."
And let it work the way, that's right.
So now we're paying 300,000, 38,000?
The cost has gone up. And I, I was prepared, when I entered the last, that last commission meeting on this issue, to vote against this. I did receive a lot of feedback from, um, artists and others who still felt that this would be a great thing to do for the city and so forth. And a lot of support came surprisingly. There was a lot of support from those who were in the art community, et cetera, about what it could do and so forth and so on. I considered that, and I looked down the table, and I counted. And, and so I went along with that. Do you understand what I'm saying to you?
So let me ask, Errol, um, because at least one of the candidates said, "Well, that's, it's probably, it sounds like a good thing, it's a lot of money, and maybe it will work, but there doesn't seem to be a plan of how to recover the initial investment that you're betting, that you're betting on the come."
I'm afraid of that as well. We're gonna let students in free. I'm, we got 36,000, I'm, that's a lot of, we're gonna let students in free? I mean, I didn't want to let anybody, you know, babies. But, I mean, it's like, even if we say at school groups, we're gonna give you a discount, and so forth, when you come as a school group. But to just show up, I, I, I had a problem with that.
It takes a lot longer to pay that back, right?
And that's right, and my, my fellow commissioner who suggested that is the same person who also suggested that we have free parking for all city residents in downtown. I'm saying, "That's a premium." I mean, you can't give away everything. And I, so I felt that, that, but I, again, I wasn't a part of the, the plan as it relates to what the cost would be, and that, so I, I am concerned about, uh, making our money, at, at least coming out, eve, even. I'm sorry, we've got Duval County involved in it, because they think they're gonna give something, but that's not guaranteed, so I have a concern. Frankly, candidly speaking, and I can take it down on all of this.
No, 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 let us do that.
Candidly speaking, I'm in a position, and, and I, I have to be very honest about it. As I said, number one, I can count. But I'm in a position where, you know, I've got my commissioners there, and, and they're all riding free on this thing, because I'm the only guy up for the election. And they all riding free on this. And so I'm constantly, and so I'm, I'm looking, I'm on the short end of a vote to saying, you know, what am I doing? And I'm not sure where, so I really weighed that heavily, and it, it does bother me. And I would say I'm still concerned, as I'm still concerned about the 450.
That was my next question, on top of all this, you're clairvoyant. So where are we on the 450s? What do you think's happening, and what do you think should happen?
Well, I was obviously very disappointed from when, when First America withdrew. But I was concerned about First America after they took charge. I was concerned about the lack of movement that I saw on that plot. I think they made some early mistakes. And one of them, with all due respect, was they had the young lady, um, can't even think of her name.
Jamie.
Jamie, Jamie.
Bruce.
Great person, but she had no experience. She, I mean, she had, on the ground, she had no, no working experience.
So where do you, where do you see it going right now?
She was overwhelmed with.
Where's it going now?
Well, I think that we are recovering some, we've lost a lot of ground. I still don't see us working at the level that I thought we would be able to. I talked in the beginning about, number one, we need to look for sponsorship in spite of the economy. We need to get out there and bring in some outside money, some corporate dollars to sponsor various aspects of this. I talked about hiring one key person who was a paid fundraiser. And pay them appropriate, I mean, you know, let's not, and say, "You're getting, you know, flat 40,000, whatever, plus 20% of whatever of the money that you were able to bring in." I mean, whatever the going market was. And hold that person accountable for going out and bringing, no. It's like, we needed two things, we needed a production, we needed a producer. Somebody who's saying, "This is what it's gonna be." To hand that over to this fundraiser, and say, "Go out there and sell that to John Morris." But we never, we never hired those two key people. We never hired anybody to write the play. And the plays have written per se, or you gotta do it, put, because the history is in place. But you've gotta put it together in a presentation that you can go up there and sit with corporate people and say, "This is what it's gonna, and how about having your name right across that door? How about having this exhibit named after you? How about having this, or, and let the guy sit back and go, "Yeah, that looks at it." And we talk about the number of tourists, and we're still getting the tourists in this city. You know, we still get that, we still get people who are coming to this city. And we've gotten a lot of great publicity of late with National Geographic, et cetera, et cetera. You know, right down to, we saw a goal when they, they, they said, uh, Flagler Memorial Church as one of the, the country. You, you put that kind of stuff together, and you sit with Verizon and say, "And you could be a part of this." But you gotta send somebody who knows what they're doing, who's been there before, and can sell that to them to, to invest in, in doing that and make that happen. I still don't see the outside investment. We talked about, well, you know, before, the locals put up money, well, in many different ways. Certainly didn't cost as much when we did the 400 as such. We did get some federal monies, if you do remember though, along the way for that too. And it was just a different story back then. We got that in spite of the fact that we were coming right around '64 when we had the civil rights components, and so there were negatives. We don't have those kind of negatives on our chariot at this point in time.
So are we still in a good place to attract corporate sponsors, or are we running out of time?
Uh, we are running out of time. Yeah, we are running out of time. But, uh, do we still have the opportunities? It's not gonna be as big as it, they thought it was gonna be? Not on a national level, but I think that from a regional perspective, we still have time to, to put on a celebration. And if we break it up in, in terms of quarters, you know, that we can have a flagship kind of operation, one per quarter, so over the year, you know, of each one of those years, '13, '14, '15, we can have something that every quarter, that there's a, there's a flagship event. So you're saying four events?
You brought up '64 and what was going on somewhere around the time of the other. And one of the most recent things that's, that's been in the news is the, the move toward a civil rights museum. And so you have one, now two, now maybe three. What are your views on where that should go? And I just think that's, that's one thing that we hear in the community of, "How many do you want? How many do you need?" And what, how should it be handled? And that's, that's a, that's a very delicate situation, probably even more particularly perhaps for you. But I'm, I'm curious about what your beliefs are on that.
Absolutely. Now, number one is that we certainly need a, there's nothing wrong with not having a civil rights museum. I think we deserve a museum with some science. But we deserve, you know, we don't have a museum, period, the city. I mean, if you go down now to the VIC, and, uh, we've now put out some of the stuff that's been stored away in terms of some of the artifacts. We don't have, we don't own a museum, period. But let's take a civil rights for the moment. We should have. I, I was disappointed when I saw people doing something, making the same mistake they've made in the past. And that is that these splinter groups, and everybody, it's like too many churches. It's like we got 15 of them, and they already have the people that's there in each one of them. And some of the people wanted, they wanted the glory. You know, Martin Luther King said, "If you don't mind not having your own name in the headline, you can get a lot done." But a lot of these people want, they want headlines. They want their name as, you know, top billing. I did it, my group did it, as compared to saying, "Oh, we, and you don't have to have your name." Who did it? So we've got this breakup. We had, we had some tremendous support out of Atlanta from the group involved with Andrew Young and so forth. We had some people rather who had experience, particularly as we talk about civil rights, who were there, who were, who were part of that. But not only that, they brought that to the table, they'd made a lot of contacts over the years because of that. But they also, a couple of them brought to the table their experience in working with the World Fair. I'm not with the, I'm sorry, with, uh, Olympics, the Atlanta Olympics.
In Atlanta, right?
Yeah, and some experience. And we failed to take advantage of that when they made an offer to us to, to assist us in that matter. I thought that they were, "Hey, we got some guys here who've been there, done that. Let's hook onto them and utilize that." The splinter groups, and now there are two, you said three or four, but they're at least, they're at least two.
Two, maybe three.
They're at least two, maybe three. And the most recent.
Dr. Hillings House is one.
Well, not under, yeah, that's, that's one of the groups that they wanted, which is totally, I mean, that, that, the little office is, it's not much larger than this room if you add another room on this, it's like, totally would be a bad or terrible mistake. I would have liked personally to have seen a combined, where we worked with the Excelsior Museum people. That would have been a perfect facility. It could have housed the Leckerville Experience, uh, the Excelsior, with the Civil Rights Experience, and been an appropriate setting. Unfortunately.
You still think it's too late for that, very late?
Yeah, because the parties, they weren't willing, and, and Andrew Young sat down and talked with some of the people with the Excelsior Museum, and so did J.T. Johnson. And they weren't willing to, to share, they weren't willing to share their space or to share the fame.
Well, what happened to the deal with St. Benedict for the more?
Well, they are still working with them, that, that's a long-term project. I mean, they're talking about, that's, you're talking about building from the ground. Tremendous dollar, it's so much cheaper if you can take what's already in place. And all we gotta do is deal with putting the exhibit in.
It's already a historic building.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's, so if you get, it's already a historic building. And now you gotta do, but when you gotta build, and then you gotta present an exhibit as well, obviously, the cost's high. And my feelings as it relates to St. Benedict, and they were never really talking about using the old school. They were talking about a new building on that site.
Right.
My honest opinion, and I'm not Catholic, I'm not Catholic, but I felt that if the Catholic Church had that much commitment to St. Benedict, and between the Pope and everybody else, they could have, they got more than enough money to have rehab St. Benedict School and put it where it needed to be. And I just never thought that they were gonna contribute at any kind of level that was gonna make us say, "Wow, this is a great deal."
Did they ever say where their funding was gonna come for that, for that project?
It was, it was gonna be fundraising.
It's all gonna be private, I said.
It's private fundraising.
Because it was talked about in the "I am Catholic," you know that. And it wasn't talked about in terms of who's paying for it. And it was this group. Was that the group originally that you chaired?
Uh, no.
Or that was T.J. Johnson?
That was J.T. Johnson. No, I, my group is a different group, we're not building anything. I, I, it's called Black Ribbon Committee. But I, so I was always hesitant about that, because they're saying, "You're going for a lot of money." And I just did not see that happening in the very near future. In the meantime, J.T. began to work with some people outside of town to try to pull in a few big guys who could help generate some dollars. The locals said, "Well, we don't know what you're doing." And then they began. And then they began to question, you know, because they, he wasn't keeping them informed on a daily basis as to who he was trying to meet with and so forth. And so they kind of grew disheartened or began to, so they, that's when a few of them got together and decided, well, we're gonna now go over here. So now they operate separately. So, and, and I've, I've got enough problems. I've stayed out of that, that vision.
All right.
But I, but I understand what's going on. And, and, and I, it's unfortunate, but, um.
But your position is, you think there really should be a civil rights museum?
I, I, I agree fundamentally, there should be a civil rights museum. I, I think it would enhance, I mean, the, the reality of it is that African Americans are looking at that area, and they will spend money, they will tour, and they're looking for that kind of thing. And I think it would be, I mean, we are, we're the ideal location. And with twenty fourteen coming up, you know, we were gonna get other support. I think it would have been ideal that we could have drawn a lot of support. But the way we're going now, I don't know, it's gonna lose. Now, I got a call from the mayor of Jacksonville. And basically, what he said indirectly was, I'm getting a request over here, and I'm getting a request over there. And I'm not sure if I would, because I may tie up with the wrong people, and then I'm gonna get the flag over here, and guys, I'm in Jacksonville, I don't need this. I mean, I don't need to risk the negative publicity because you tied up with the wrong people. And it was, he was the mayor, and at, at that point, yeah, Tony Hill worked for him.
So, well, one more, just tie it up now. So, there's gonna be something in twenty fourteen. Right now, we really don't know what that civil rights commemoration is gonna be because we have three museums.
Yeah, yeah, mine had nothing to do with the museum. But I'm, I'm working on some events.
Okay.
I'm working on something a little different, and it's not, I'm saying, we need to talk about what we'd like to happen during that time period. So we're looking at maybe a, a film festival that would bring together some of the films, whether it's from Dare Not Walk Alone to Crossing Santa Augustine, to the Savannah, to the Selma, looking to bring in some of those films and showing the struggle, showing what happened in some of the various cities. We're looking at a lecture series that we could bring in some key people, maybe once every quarter, work with, have at that Flagler College, have a speaker who comes in and talk about, the guy who was here a few weeks ago, for, I thought was a perfect kind of example of the kind of people that we would bring in in twenty fourteen. So we're looking at doing a speakers thing that over those, you know, four of them, doing, again, splitting into quarters. We're looking at bringing in Florida Memorial University, maybe trying to get them to have that national convention in Santa Augustine during that year. That would bring some of their students who were participants in the, in the struggle to come back to town and, and kind of recognize them for, for their efforts. We're encouraging local black families, if you have a family reunion during that year, have it in Saint Augustine, so we could again bring some exposure to that aspect of thing. We're looking at doing a, a, what we call a, a Let Freedom Rain, for, we're talking about bringing the outdoor chimes, creating an exhibit with outdoor chimes. And that, and they're, they're like, hands-on.
That was one of Jamie's, his best ideas down in the plaza, not the plaza, but in the.
Well, we're talking about at the V I C.
At the V I C in that corridor, in that plaza area there.
That was my, right, but that, doing it at the V I C, right? I think kids all the way, they love it because it's hands-on. So all the kids coming here, and they're, and, and, and all the child, the group is, oh, they're gonna give us the chimes.
Oh, really?
They'll make, I, I've worked, they'll make the donation, they say, we'll give you the chimes. You're gonna have to pay for the installation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
Okay?
They have a city hall too, didn't they?
So we're looking, they, yeah, they brought some of them, that, that was mine, we brought it to City Hall, and, and, yeah, that's, so that, I, that's what I've been trying to do.
I still have a brochure on that.
The city, the city would have to pay, as I said, the installation aspect of that.
Also, I saw that as, almost a legacy project, because it would be there for decades.
It would be there for decades. And it was perfect because, as they turned out, the chimes were the same number as the word Let, Let Freedom Rain.
Yeah.
And the chimes, it went fourteen times, it's the fourteen, it went fourteen chimes. And that's what the name would be, Let Freedom Rain. And we think, so that's what I, and we're still working on that, that, but that's my project. That's my project.
Good, I think that's a good one.
Um, and trying to do that, and we're still looking at a few of, but that's the kind of thing that, and we still are moving forward. I, I had, I kinda had to regroup, I had to regroup for a couple of reasons. One is I had a couple of people in there who were more disruptive than they were offering something, and I, we didn't need that, we needed to work together. I brought together, I selected people, I invited them to the meeting. At one point in time, I had to make it very clear that we're all here working together. And, and I said, so you see people sitting at this table, black or white, they, they wouldn't be here if they weren't on, if they weren't together with us. So don't beat up on this guy. And he said, well, I think we all, because I had a couple of people who jumped on, whoa, that's not what we're here about. We're here to collectively, and I tried to say, let's work together. Some of them, I don't know why, why are we gonna do this, and they, we're not in the past. Well, they may not let, whatever, we talk, we got an African American president of the United States. This is not yesterday, okay? So let us, I mean, don't tell them about, you're a friend, well, what makes you think they're gonna let, let us? What are you experiencing? But I mean, I had to go through that with some African Americans. So I had to suddenly say, you know what, I need to shake this tree and get a few of the people, way up from a few people that's pulling us, holding us back as compared to moving us forward. Because the whole, we've got to collectively work together, that, whether that's on this cause or some of the other issues we deal with, we are one city. And we have differences, but we are one city. It's not me against you and us against them. We're one, and we're not, we're not always agree, but it's a sharing, it's a balance. And it's always dealing with that kind of balance as you deal with constituents and deal with them. So that's, but we, I am still, and haven't gotten, oh, this hasn't been a good year for me, as you, oh, no, as such. And I, I, in part, I don't apologize, but, but I, but I am embarrassed by some parts of it, and wish I could redo, recoup a couple of things in terms of that, and this is often reckless.
Okay, then, it ain't else the record.
Kids are.
We won't put those stories.
I won't discuss it.
But Errol, okay.
Go ahead.
How are you working through that? Are people talking to you about these things?
I'm, I'm still, yeah, I'm, I'm back on that and working it, and we're gonna be moving, we're moving forward. We're moving forward with that. We still got another, you know, we got thirteen, we got another year plus.
You're talking about that project.
I'm strictly talking about the, the chimes. I'm strictly talking about the, the festival, the film festival, the, uh, the, the lecture series.
Right.
Those are, and encouraging families to have reunion here. I'm talking about, I'm also talking about bringing, looking at maybe having something, working with the county at the amphitheater, and bringing in some music. Although, we'll bring in maybe different music, different entertainment, so we can have some African Americans who will perform, I, we, we look at a few people. But have a, a couple of, because we haven't had any this year with, you know, last, I think the last one here was when Aretha Franklin came. But fourteen, we'd like to have at least two or three events at the amphitheater.
Well, now, Errol, on the, on the issue of what you said had been a bad year, how is that? How are you explaining that in the campaign? I mean, are people asking you questions about it?
They're not asking me questions about it. Uh, my supporters are still my supporters, and they understand the difficulty, or they understand the situation, and as some parts of it has fizzed out, so you go, what was to that? But no, they're not, I mean, they may say, hey, that may be a handle in some cases, but my supporters are still my supporters. I've got no negative feedback from, now, some guy who don't like me, who, you know, will walk up in my face and say, oh, you know, I thank you, but so obviously, you know, then they say, or aren't gonna come up and, and hit me with that. But I've got people, I've got a lot of encouragement, to be very honest, who said, hey, Errol, we, we, we got you, we understand, you know, hey, you, you've had ten years of service. And what you, this has nothing to do with your, what you, your ability to do this and that, and what you've been doing with the commission, and we see no reason why you can't continue to do your job. And, and that's frankly how I feel about it, is that, you know, that's behind me now. And I'm moving forward with doing what I think I do best in terms of serving the city, uh, being a balance. I mean, I've come a long ways over the ten years, well, you know, I was a part in the garage. I mean, they're lacking, going through the number of things that I've been a part of in terms of making this city what it is, you know, so.
Let me shift, let me shift gears.
Yes.
Because we are going in that time.
What time do we start?
Three thirty. So what, what do you think's gonna end up happening with the M and M market? What's, what's working there? What do you think ought to happen there? Do you think we should have gotten into that mess?
First of all, I think we did the right thing.
Okay.
I mean, we had organized crime operating right there in the neighborhood. Organized crime is operating in your neighborhood, you want the city, you want the municipality to do something about it. Well, in this case, we've done something about it. It is, it cost us money in terms of police service, and we've had, we've been able to, um, release one, not an officer, but a position, eliminate one position, because pretty much.
Well, there's, there's some people would argue that if you have the crime in your neighborhood, why don't you just have the police handle it?
Well, yeah, that's, that's, that's very expensive, but you don't want it, you know, you don't want it there. You don't want it operating, that's like saying, well, there's a meth lab here, but you don't buy it, you just keep sending in another, you know, we bought, we took that out, we eliminated that element. So that's not repeated, we would, and when they went through the whole process, long story short, it was easier and less costly for us to buy it out as we did, versus they were gonna try to turn it over to another family member, and to somebody else down the line, and somebody else was gonna buy it, and we'd have been there for years. We've been in, you know, in, in that legal struggle, and we've been spending money in defeat. So we, this was a short way out, I think. So the money, I think, was well worth it. Having said that, we've had a couple of people who've come to us and wanted peace. The problem now seems to be the cost in part, the cost of the structure, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think the building has any historical integrity anymore. I think it's gone. It, it had been modified, chopped up, changed over, that nobody can afford to buy the land and then take that building and bring it back to standards to make it work. I say, level the land. If people wanna step in tomorrow, we say, you can start from scratch. You can make, you can build something to look similar to, you can re, you know, you can build a new building. It could be a gemism inside, but the outside would blend into the community, it could look like what was there before. Much less expensive than trying to rehab that building. So the obstacle is, we don't wanna tear, I'm saying, tear that sucker down and sell it to the hospital.
Move on.
Move on. And of course, we have some control over what's to be there, but we've had a couple of great offers from guys, you know, I wanna do this, a guy wanted to put in a legitimate, uh, night, I mean, a restaurant, a nice restaurant, where he wanted to sell, he wanted soul food, a guy who has a couple of restaurants. And he wanted to sell, you know, soul food and so forth, and have jazz on Sunday, music kind of thing, and very nice, but he wanted a new building. He didn't wanna take that building and, and, and make it what he needed it to be, to prove what he wanted to do.
Yeah, it's true.
So I would say, sell it tomorrow, get the money from it, and then work with the new buyer, the owner. I don't wanna put a service station on that corner, of course not. But there are other people who wanna do other things with that, so I'm ready to, to, to let it go.
Cool. Uh, we, I'm gonna circle back and around to the V I C. We talked about West Augustine infrastructure. I would ask a couple of questions, there are some that make the argument of, rather than spending one point three, four million, plus maybe more, what about all the other infrastructure needs of this, of this ancient city that has old pipes, old streets, old storm sewers, old, lots of things? And I know that those are a priority for the city commission and for the residents of the city. How do you, you, you speak of the balance, how do you balance those types of things?
Well, it, it's interesting you would say that there was a priority, because I sometimes wonder, I've been on this commission ten years. During the good old days, when there, those are priorities that were still in place, and we did nothing about them. We knew that the lightning was leaking nine years ago, and it was still leaking, and we, we knew it was gonna cost us money to rehab, to go and put a new roof on that building, we didn't wanna spend the money to do it. We knew that the garden club was going down, it was gonna have to be, we didn't wanna spend the money on doing it. Okay? We know, we've known that our infrastructure need from one end to the other. We didn't wanna spend the money on doing it. We didn't wanna spend the money when we had the money.
Even though, even though this money is coming out of reserves?
Yeah, and we didn't wanna spend that, we didn't wanna spend any money. So I'm saying, you know, we need to move forward, we need to progress, we need to still work on tomorrow needs as well as deal with today's. We ought to be doing infrastructure. We need a ten-year plan to say, we will go from one end of the city to the other end, every street, every, you could walk around there, a minute patch holes, and these streets, so many cuts and patch holes and cuts, because we're just putting our tires. We fix a leak over here, every, every other night, it's a crew that we call out and work. And you come up in the morning, and they're digging down the street, and then there's a new patch, a new patch. And it's gonna all, until we go out and recognize that and put the money in there and say, over the next ten years, we're gonna spend fifteen million, whatever dollars to do our whole, but we're not prepared. So I agree that those needs, in the meantime, there are other things that we need to do. We still wanna still try to maintain some quality of life, the activities, we're gonna deal with tourism, which is critical. We are, tourism is our economic backbone. So these things are gonna draw, get the, whether it's V I C, so, so we, we still wanna do that. And although it's difficult, but you know, it, it's all difficult, and it all requires money. And we could, if we would have stood up and said, we're gonna do these five things, and so let's start with, I would say, fine. But they'll, you know, it's like, we're the one, and then you got to pull teeth to get them to do anything. I think it's a shame that we had our own building condemned, and I'm talking about the garden club. I think it was a shame, the Gallimore Center, oh, they are neat, there's no question about it. But we don't wanna spend the money even now on the Gallimore Center. Okay, it's pulling teeth to get them to spend money now on the Gallimore Center. So you tell me, if you say, well, don't, they don't wanna spend money anywhere. And, and that's not, I would disrespect my colleagues, but it's, the reality of it is, any of us are fighting. You went, I, I didn't, and this was a mind that sensed, as I say, I counted, and, and that one was gonna pass. But I assure you, some of these others wouldn't pass.
Well, let's talk about the Garden Center. I drove by it today, and it's, uh, it's sitting there with a fence around it. I had my wedding reception there in seventy-one, it was a beautiful building.
My, we have no plan, even if we said, we have no plans.
You don't have a plan there, you don't really have a plan for Gallimore.
That's right.
You're hoping that this feasibility study for CRA will give you a plan for Gallimore and the rest of Lincolnville, but we still have that little old building sitting out there with a lot of history.
I fully agree.
So.
I fully agree.
So what do you do as commissioner?
I keep beating on my, I'm only one. You can sit and talk about all what you're gonna do, but all you can really do is understand the need, understand the hurdles, and begin to say, I gotta keep working at it, I gotta keep working at it, I gotta keep pushing it. And I gotta do it without offending my colleagues.
Have to work together.
Yeah, that's right. I've got, so I've gotta do, so it, it takes, actually, there's a frustration involved. But it's, it's, you know it's needed, and, and, I mean, you know, there are people who don't wanna do anything, they don't want anything. And that's, that's gonna always be there. So as I say, I, I, that wouldn't go through without me, the other one, in terms of V I C.
Errol, we appreciate your time with us today, and you get, I tell folks that you get what most people do not get in this room, the last word. So you get the, you get the closing statement, sir, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you for that. I, I guess, again, I would just say that this is, this is a difficult job, and unless you own the job, you really don't always understand it. But what we need to be working at is that we need to collectively work together as one community, because we are one community. And, and although we come in with, with different perspectives, we need to realize that ultimately, we're only successful when we work together. We have to put aside our differences and have a balanced plan. This balance between the, the local versus the tourists, the economic aspects of it, the impact it has us on as a community are critical. And as we go toward twenty fifteen, which we all hope will be successful at a level, I think that as we do work together, you know, nothing's gonna happen. We've been very successful in many areas over the past few years. We can look at Fourth of July, one, every year, that's a very successful event. But the recognition we've got nationally and otherwise, I think, is priceless. We need to take advantage of that, continue to work in, in all the needy areas, and realize though that quality of life costs money, it doesn't come at zero cost. And so I hope that our citizens will understand that, and that we will fruitfully, but intelligently, utilize the resources we have and put in the necessary dollars to do what we need to do to continue to make us the kind of city that we have been and will be in future years. Thank you.